To the flag of United States of America. And to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian Robertson.
Here.
Gary Shuck.
Present.
Roger Faust.
Here.
Lindsay Washmuth.
Here.
Chad Blake.
Present.
Need to amend the agenda. I will make a motion to amend the agenda to add in group health coverage presentation between Resolution five dash twenty twenty-five and budget discussion.
Second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
All right, now we will start with Resolution five dash twenty twenty-five. This is a joint resolution. LaPelle Town Council and the Stony Creek Township Board of Trustees proposing reorganization under Indiana Code Title thirty-six, Article one point five, Chapter four. Essentially, this resolution is to start the process of having public hearings to potentially merge the town of LaPelle and Stony Creek Township. There are several reasons why we are looking at doing this. One of the biggest ones is the Anderson water territory. It would bring, if it passes, will bring Anderson their water territory within a half a mile of LaPelle. It also is essentially a backdoor to annexation. Some other things that it can help with is it would get our population above thirty-five hundred with the new House Bill SB one. Our own lit local income tax, not have to go beg the county for part of theirs every year, every year. Some other things, LaPelle and Stony Creek Township have their levies, which essentially is the amount of money we get from your tax dollars. I'll use residential, the one percent as an example. Our levies are set to the lowest, which means what we didn't take fifteen, twenty years ago gets spread out amongst county. Basically, money that we didn't take at that point got spread out. It was not a tax savings. We can reset our levies so we can recoup as much of your tax dollars that you pay in into the town of LaPelle. Does anyone have anything else they'd like to add?
Well, it's more of a reorganization. It reorganizes the whole government structure for the township and the town of LaPelle. And like Brian said, it enhances the way we can do, have services for the whole entire area. And increases our ability to do the lit and some other tax levies, which would enhance what we can do. And it, and not only that, when we're talking reorganization, we're talking about it will be a whole new board. We will not be, this board, Town of LaPelle Board, the, us five, will not be in charge of the new organization. It'll be a whole, everybody will get to be elected, there'll be districts and so, but this, all this does tonight is start the process of looking into whether we can do that or not. And we need to start the process.
And if passed here and Stony Creek passes it, it essentially stops the Anderson water territory until this goes through, either passes or denies. It, it stops that until that time.
And they can, that's some of the, like, day vote on, right, at voting time?
Yes, Stony Creek Township also has to have special meeting just like this.
No, I guess what I meant, Brian, is if we agree, the voter, citizens have to vote on that, to take effect.
There are several public hearings.
Oh, yeah.
And then that is to get it on the ballot. Once it's on the ballot, then the general public is to vote on it in a general election.
In a referendum.
That was the word.
At the end of the day, it gives the people of LaPelle and Stony Creek Township the power to choose their destiny versus somebody else coming in and choosing it for them. And right now, anybody that's out there listening, that's within Stony Creek Township, talk to your representatives on the county, on the county, I'm sorry, on the township board, to make sure that they, they understand what you want. If, if those three people on that board say, we're not interested, then there's no stopping Anderson. At least this stops them and gives the opportunity for anybody that wants to be part of it or not be part of it, go into a ballot and cast their vote. And then majority wins. So, you know, don't, doing this process allows the many to decide over the few. And we, we want to make sure that the town of LaPelle is giving the opportunity to the people to choose where they want to go versus being forced into somewhere they might not want to be.
And my understanding of it is Anderson is pretty much getting everything they want right now from the IRC.
Including forty-five million dollars for the water.
Entertainer motion for Resolution five dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Two seconds.
Roger.
Who first, then?
Chad.
I think you should have a public, take a break and have a public hearing in case there's somebody out here who wants to complain before you take a vote. Close the meeting and have a public hearing.
We will close the special meeting for the LaPelle Town Council and open a public hearing on Resolution five dash twenty twenty-five. Anyone have comments, concerns?
Can you tell us who the three people are that are on the Stony Creek Township or that they should contact?
Do you know that?
Pardon me, I'm sorry. The three, Terry Wilson and Mrs. Terry Wilson, and I don't know the third one. I really don't.
No, is it Diane?
She is a trustee. Diane Lauthner is a trustee.
She's not a voter.
But she doesn't vote on that.
I'm going to say the guy's name was wrong. Let me see if I can find that for you, Kristi.
And I'm sorry, we have met with them, but I just don't, I don't remember his name. Anyone else?
Our paths don't cross that often.
Okay, we will close the public hearing and resume the town council's special meeting.
Yeah, we had a motion by Chad, a second by Roger. Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
Yes.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
Okay, Town of LaPelle's group health insurance coverage is coming up for auto renewal if we don't do anything. We have a group that would like to give us a presentation.
Good evening. Should have a packet in front of us. I, I did have it in a little bit of order. If we were able to keep it that way, I'll go through it in that same order here. So basically, you're coming up on a transition with the chamber plan that's currently with Anthem. And SIHO is, which is Southern Indiana Health Organization, is taking that insurance carrier position. So Anthem is going to be removed, SIHO is going to come into place. And they're giving a flat renewal. If you just leave it alone, you can have a flat renewal, no increase at all. Same exact coverage, all that kind of stuff. But what I've got in front of you is our proposal. We have a platform that works with carriers, works with Anthem, United Healthcare, SIHO, SANA, Aetna, Cigna, everybody. So it's independent from the carrier, but all it does is help administer some of the deductible and out-of-pocket exposures that the employees will, will run into. So there's going to be savings to the town, and then there's also going to be some better coverage for the employees. We've got two versions. The version that I first proposed has the most savings, but still does have a little bit of health, or better coverage. The second one has a little less savings, but I think significantly more benefits to, to the employees and a lot lower out-of-pocket and stuff like that. So the very first one is just going to say Town of LaPelle Group Health, okay? Just to not mix it up, the other one is, it has enhanced in there, so that's the only difference. So we can run, run through the second page of that, which is the numbers, because that's kind of the important part, I believe. So you'll see at the top, it should look like this, anybody's not following along. The top is just your renewal from SIHO. Your employee price is seven, seven hundred seventy-seven dollars, sixteen cents, employee spouse, sixteen thirty-three seventy-two. Employee children, fourteen hundred thirty-three cents, and then a family, if you had any, would be two thousand two sixty-eight oh eight. Out to the right is what that monthly total would look like that you're paying SIHO, ten thousand, twenty-eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Does everybody see that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So below it is our version of a similar, it's the same carrier, so it would still be SIHO, but we put our platform with it. What we do is we increase the deductible up to a higher amount. That creates savings, so it lowers your premium, okay? But then our platform will come in and then some reimbursements on doctor co-pays and on the, on the enhanced version will also affect the prescription co-pays. So what you do is you pay your SIHO premium, which you'll see those, those amounts lower. So instead of, on a single being seven hundred seventy-seven dollars, sixteen cents, you'd pay SIHO six hundred dollars, eleven cents. So you see that's dropping those prices down. The next column is what is paid into the HRA. So you do, you know, nine employees at ninety-three dollars, thirty cents, your total net rate becomes six, six ninety-three, forty-one. So compare that to the seven seventy-seven, sixteen. I've got your, I've got your monthly premium at seven thousand, seven forty-one, forty, and I apologize, it says Anthem on there. Sorry. That was what we originally proposed, but that would be the SIHO premium. I can update that for you guys, but, but the seven thousand, seven forty-one, forty is the SIHO premium that you pay. And then CIG, which is that administrative platform, is one thousand, two oh one, seventy. So then it brings your total monthly bill down to eight thousand, nine forty-three, ten. Then in the highlighted area, that's showing that there's a gross monthly savings of about a thousand, eighty-five, thirty-nine, and then it's annual savings of thirteen thousand, twenty-four, and sixty-three cents. So the page that was on the top is what we, we literally call it our how it works page. So it's going to look like this, and again, this is on the regular one, not the enhanced yet. So the regular plan, you'll see you've got a fifteen hundred dollar deductible. That's the exact same as what you have now, okay? It's a twenty percent or what you would call an eighty-twenty plan, twenty percent co-insurance, that's exactly what you have now. Your maximum out-of-pocket currently for that same plan is fifty-five hundred for a single. With our version, it's five thousand, so there's a little bit of less out-of-pocket there. And then your doctor visit, co-pay currently is twenty-five dollars for a primary care physician, which is that PCP, and then it's fifty dollars for a specialist co-pay, SCP. And ours is zero, so it would be through reimbursement, which will get into the step. So they would pay the doctor's visit, they'd send it to us, and then they're going to get all of it reimbursed. And then on the SCP, they're going to pay, and then they'll get reimbursed down to twenty-five dollars. So they are still saving some, some money off this business. You'll see the drug card is going to be the exact same. Right now, you guys have a ten, ten dollars, sixty dollars, hundred twenty-five, or four hundred. So there's no change in that spot there. So the sheet is, is designed to show you how it works. So you're still going to take your SIHO card into the doctors and stuff like that. We've verified that the doctors are all. It's a very strong network. SIHO brought in True Connect to fill in any gaps that they had to try to mimic the Anthem network that you had. So you bring your SIHO card in, and then they're going to send the claim to, so your provider's going to send a claim to SIHO, just like they do now. So I walk into Dr. Smith, I hand him my, my SIHO card, they run my procedures, and then off, they send the, the bill, the invoice to SIHO to get repriced, which is where they create an explanation of benefits, an EOB. Everybody follow that?
Mm-hmm.
So that's exactly how it is now. That's exactly how it's going to be with us, okay? The only difference is we have a second step. When you receive the EOB or the explanation of benefits, you can email, mail, or text a copy of that to us. We've got all our information down below. So all they do is they take that EOB, send it to us, and then we reprice, reprice and process your benefits down to this page and that coverage, okay? So if I go in and I pay twenty-five dollars at the doctor, I'm going to take a picture of that, I'm going to send it, and then I'm going to get twenty-five dollars back in, in reimbursement. And, and I'll go in through more detail on the claim, okay? I've got a sheet on the back there that's going to go through, you know, a little more detail. So that's the version that is just kind of, it's closer to apples to apples, but we do still have a little better benefit than what you got, and then obviously some lower premiums. The next packet is the enhanced version. We're, we're discussing just the idea of if we are saving some money, maybe we could also still save money and improve the benefits more significantly. So we can run through the numbers on that. It's just, it's, everything is going to be the same except for that middle column where it was. It was ninety-three dollars and thirty cents for a single. It goes to one nineteen sixty-eight for a single, two fifty-one thirty-three for employee spouse, two thirteen oh three, and then three ninety-seven thirty-four. And you see that, that total rate just goes up a little bit, but your SIHO is still the exact same. So the only thing that's changing is just that, that difference to administer the enhanced benefits, okay? And then you'll see that it's still, you still have the same, bringing fruit to the carrier, and then the CIG portion goes up a little bit. Total monthly bill goes to nine, nine thousand, two eighty-two, eighty-eight. Savings goes down a little bit, but you're still saving almost nine thousand dollars, okay? So if we want to go to the front page of that, I'll go through the difference in the coverages. So this is the one that says Town of LaPelle Enhanced Group Health. So you'll see if I, if I lay it side by side, I've got fifteen hundred dollar deductible still. I've got an eighty-twenty plan still. I've got a maximum out-of-pocket of five thousand still. But on the specialist co-pay, we designed it to be a full reimbursement. So if they go to a, a primary care physician, they get it fully reimbursed. If they go to a specialist, they get that full reimbursed. So the, the doctor's visit is the second most used benefit in a health plan. The most used benefit is the prescription, so that's the RX plan. So there you'll see some significant coverage enhancement there. So the, the generic co-pay at ten dollars, we just left that alone. We, we kind of discussed it might be low enough, kind of thing. And then after that, the, the second tier that was sixty, you still pay sixty, you take your picture, you send it, and you're going to get thirty dollars back, okay? The, the third tier, you're going to pay one twenty-five, you take a picture, and you're going to get sixty-two dollars, fifty cents back. If you get into the fourth tier, you still pay the four hundred, take a picture, you're going to get two hundred dollars back, okay? So the process is the exact same as what it is on both, on both plans, okay? We can, we can reimburse through checks if they want to get a paper check. We can also direct deposits straight into their account, and that usually turns around in about forty-eight hours. So if I was, if you don't do anything different and you stay with SIHO, don't do anything that we're doing, they're going to be paying twenty-five dollars at the doctor, they're going to be paying fifty dollars at the doctor, they're going to be paying full prescription co-pay, stuff like that. So that part of that transaction is still the same. They're still having to lay that money out. The big difference is with our program, they're going to get most or all of it back, okay, through reimbursement. So, so there's nothing, so it's not as if they're having to lay out a whole bunch more money in order to get a little bit back. You know, it's the same amount that they're laying out on both sides, okay? So the, the last packet is walking through like a deductible claim under your current. You'll see the first page of that says current at the top left, and then the second page says CIG on the top left. So if you lay them side by side, I'll go through your current plan right now, and I'm just using a hypothetical. These numbers would interchange with any other amount. I can, I could always modify it if somebody had a, a different example they want to use. So I picked a four thousand dollar claim. So I go into the hospital, got an outpatient surgery or something like that. The hospital comes up four thousand dollars. I show them my SIHO card, and then they're going to send that four thousand off to SIHO, and you'll see the next page, the next step is, it's going to get repriced through SIHO and create an EOB, an explanation of benefits. And whenever they do that, they, they put it on their discounts, the provider discounts, and I'm using thirty-five hundred. That, that's a, that's a random number, but it's just a sample. So it could be less, it could be more, but it's just about getting numbers that we can use. So the next step is I get the EOB, and then the employee would be paying their fifteen hundred dollar deductible, just like, you know, this is, this is a current, you know, situation. I pay fifteen hundred dollars for my deductible, and you'll see that it leaves two thousand dollars that would then go into co-insurance, okay? And according to the current plan you have, it's an eighty-twenty, so eighty percent is SIHO co-insurance and twenty percent is employee co-insurance. Follow along? So that means at the end of the, at the end of the claim, Mr. Smith is paying fifteen hundred dollar deductible plus four hundred dollars in co-insurance, nineteen hundred dollars out of, out of his pocket. Okay? That's exactly what you've got right now, okay? So then again, if we, if we set it side by side, you'll see that it's only one step different on our, under ours. Same four thousand dollar claim, same repricing at thirty-five hundred dollars from the carrier. And then the difference is the employee sent, remember that step two, is send that, that EOB to CIG, okay? So you can email, mail, or text to us. We don't care how we get it, okay? There's also no caveats to, oh, you didn't do it in time, or you did the step wrong, or anything like that. There's none of that. In fact, if somebody says, I don't know how to do this, we'll come over and walk them through it. Literally, sit down with them and do it for them, okay? So there's no way they can mess this up. So it's not designed like that. It's designed to work, not to not work. So anyways, you send that EOB, and you'll see the exact same number. Fifteen hundred dollar deductible still leaves two thousand dollars of co-insurance. And then the difference is CIG takes the place of, of SIHO for that eighty percent. So CIG will actually send that employee a sixteen hundred dollar check, okay, or the correct deposit into their account, okay? And then the employee has the same four hundred dollar co-insurance that they had before, and then the difference is, is now the employee has all the money to then pay that bill. So that thirty-five hundred dollar bill gets paid completely by the employee, but using sixteen hundred dollars of CIG money. So then at the end, it's the employee pays out of their pocket the exact same nineteen hundred dollars. So it costs the exact same to that employee. Does that make sense? Because you're just using the money from CIG to supplement that sixteen, that sixteen hundred dollars of co-insurance. And then as far as those, the, you know, doctor's visits and the prescriptions, literally, those are just straight reimburseals because they've already paid it. So there's nothing to then send out because you've already paid, you're just getting money that you, that you'd already set out. But this is going to show what happens if I go to the hospital. So another thing that people kind of question is, well, if we've raised this deductible, does Mr. Smith have to pay all of this first? Do they have to, do they have to send thirty-five hundred dollars before I receive anything from CIG? And the answer is no. We go off of the explanation of benefits. So there's nothing that would require Mr. Smith to shell out more money than he would have had to on the other plan, and then wait and hope and pray that I get the money back, okay?
So my question is.
Yep.
Maybe some of our employees can't shell out the thirty-five hundred.
Exactly, exactly. And then, and then also, you know, everybody's situation, each employee's situations, you need, some have money, some don't have money, and that's all fine. But they could still take that sixteen hundred dollars, pay it to the hospital, and then they can still set up payments or something like that if they're not in a position to pay their, their portion of the deductible and so on. But at least then they're getting sixteen hundred to help, you know, set that payment plan up with. But, but the big key is it's not costing them anything additional. So their, their portion of the premiums would come down, and their out-of-pocket is going to come down, and their doctor's visits and prescriptions all come down with, with the enhanced version. One thing missing on the enhanced is you're not going to get the, the prescription, additional reimbursement.
So this would, bear with me here. This explanation of benefits comes before the bill does.
Well, I'll tell you, the bill's going to come before that, but that's irrelevant, okay? And, and not a bad question. It's just irrelevant because the, the hospital will tag it to the back of your shirt, they could, you know, they come out so fast, right? But they still have an obligation to send that to SIHO, Anthem, United Healthcare, whoever. Have to do that. If they don't do that, they're not going to get paid no matter what. They're under contract to do that. So they're going to send that out, even though that bill's going to come to me early. I'm going to give. Send to, to CIG, and then we'll administer the, the reimbursements and stuff off of that or the, the kind of prepaid. And yet, we can totally walk through it. We've had people that. We've had people that... Because we'll come down, come out, sit down with everybody beforehand. If they said, hey, let's go forward with this, we'll go come out and teach everybody. And then, like most men, a lot of times I'll sit there and glaze over. But if they say, well, I'm never going to use it, and then they get six months in, and they... One of our groups, and he said, I had no idea. I wasn't paying any attention. What do I do? Comes in with a stack of bills. We sat down with them. We walked through the whole thing, took the pictures. So, they can't mess it up. It's designed to pay out properly because that's what you're putting that money in there for, is so that it pays out properly.
And Brian, if you even come benefit when you... We're going to send you a check with CIG, that sixteen hundred. Sometimes you need to set up payment plans, right? It's a lot easier to set up a payment plan when you're coming with sixteen hundred. Whereas before, you're coming with nothing. Right? You're saying, hey, I can take that extra money and pay it. Well, if you can bring sixteen hundred dollars to it, they're going to work with you more inside of payment.
And the same thing with scheduling surgeries. Any more when you raise these deductibles up, hospitals are kind of getting... And they say, hey, you got a six thousand dollar deductible. I need half of it. So, what we do is we get that... They're going to give you a printout that says this is what the procedure's going to be. And you can actually send that before you've even gone. And we'll pre-fund our portion. Not your portion, but our portion. So, we'll run the claim even ahead because we know it's going to pay off of that EOB. So, that way, they're not having to, you know, save up to then go get a surgery.
On the deductible, is that a yearly amount one time?
Yep. So, it's the same as what you have now. So, they're all calendar year. So, if anybody has met their deductible now, they've still met it.
So, it's a fifteen hundred dollar yearly deductible?
Yeah.
That's single covered.
And, you know, not to muddy the waters, but, you know, if savings wasn't as much of the issue and you wanted to get more benefits, I can always plug in more benefits and see if you want to lower deductible or something like that. You know, I can always do that, but then we push it out. We've got to turn it around pretty quick, you know?
What's the turnaround time on the reimbursement? Like when they send you the EOB?
Yep. Great question. So, every single Friday, we cut checks. Okay? So, every single Friday. So, if... What did I say, Monday? So, today, I go in, I get my hospital... Or I'd gone in last week, and I've got my EOB. I'm going to send it over. And then by Friday, checks are going to get passed.
Or direct deposit.
But it's going to be on a Friday.
Yes. So, it's every Friday. Now, if she gets it ahead, it's fine, but we don't get it passed.
Right.
Yeah. So, again, the turnaround time is designed to be quick because people get antsy when they've got that bill sent from the hospital, and they're probably already getting, you know, calls or something like that. They always want their money so fast.
Their maximum of five business days, seven turnover days. Sorry. Five business days, seven turnover days.
Mail. I mean, if we're mailing, that's the only thing we can't control, right? But yes, the turnaround is quick. And again, we've had situations where people have forgotten about it. And we actually had one where they forgot about it for two years. They forgot about their reimbursement for two years. And they called us, and they said, hey, I didn't realize I had this two years ago. Can I do anything? We sent the bills and sent them the money. They can't mess it up. Our competitors have a product that has loopholes. It has loopholes for timelines, has loopholes for services. You don't have to approve any services with us. We don't care. Don't care. We follow the carrier one hundred percent. Carrier says it's covered, CIG covers it. Carrier says it's not covered, CIG doesn't cover it. Okay? So, there's nothing where two parties are butted head, you know? Whereas, again, our competitors, they have little loopholes. Well, you said you were only going to go in there for two days, and you were in there for six. Well, now, six days, you didn't tell us. You didn't clear with us. That's not ours. Ours, we don't even care. You don't call us, you don't tell us anything. We just want the EOB, and then we pay off of that. Straightforward. There's no way to get it declined. Like, it's not possible because we follow it one hundred percent. If the carrier declines it because it was elective or experimental, you know, things like that, or these GLP ones that aren't used for diabetes and stuff like that, those are... We follow the carrier. So, if SiHo and Anthem aren't covering it, we don't cover it either. Okay? So, we follow it one hundred percent by the carrier.
Do you want my opinion on this? I think it's a good deal. I mean, I did receive the... From our current insurance guy, he basically sent me a spreadsheet and said we would still continue the same amount for one year on the SiHo, and then Anthem is a three percent increase for basically why he's offering us. And we're saving money. I mean, we're saving money. And to me, to benefit the employees, and I'm not just saying this because I'm on the insurance, but for our employees to be able to get all their money back, you know, when they go to a doctor's visit or a specialist's visit. I mean, to me, that's a benefit to them.
Currently, do we offer... I'm trying to remember. Do we still currently offer like a family plan, right, to the employees?
We don't. And you're not going to be able to do a family plan for...
No. I mean, I know there's...
Yeah. We can get... We offer it, but they got to pay for their... We don't offer to pay for them. We pay fully for the employee.
Yeah. I understand that.
So, basically, here's what happened I got, and this is why it didn't get put on the agenda when I did it the other day. I received a phone call on Friday from the other insurance guy. He told me if you guys didn't make a decision between the Anthem and SiHo insurance before the fifteenth of this month, that they will automatically renew. Me... Not me, whoa. Whoever will automatically... Is it me, whoa? They would automatically renew if we didn't make it... If we didn't decide to change it.
So, they would automatically renew at the plan design that you currently have.
Yeah. Right. So, that's why it didn't get put on, and I asked to have it put on because we don't meet until the eighteenth. So... So, basically, you have two plans from Aaron and then two plans from the other guy, Billy, is what we got to have.
Ultimately, the same coverage.
Yeah. But the two they're offering are cheaper with more advantages than...
My only question would be if I'm the patient, and I'm the one that's having to deal with this. I've spent a little time in and out of the hospital over the last few years. And the last thing that I care or want to mess with is any more hassle than I have to. How much effort and energy taking the picture, sending the thing off, messing with it? How much... Like, if we're talking about you were in the hospital, you ended up being there a week longer than planned. There's all that kind of stuff going on. How much effort is that person going to have to put into all this? Are they going to have to mess with it for an hour or a day, make a ninety-five phone call?
Sure.
How's it going to affect them? Because, you know, while, yes, fiscally responsible for the town is very important to continue to provide for the employees and give them the same level they expect, we also don't want to go, hey, we're saving a whole bunch of money so that you have payments left to do. You know what I mean?
So, there's a couple of things on that. One, if anybody's overwhelmed by it, we'll come and do it for them. That's one. I'm literally sitting down with them. Hand me your messy stack of bills, and I'll... And we'll walk you through it. Okay? That's one thing. But two, any more, you know, people are taking pictures of the silliest things, you know, hundreds a day, it seems like a lot of people. And so, if I said, hey, every time you go to the pharmacy, take a picture of your receipt, and I'm going to send you, you know, sixty-five dollars, I think most people would say, okay, I'll do that because I'm probably taking a picture somewhere. You know what I mean? That kind of thing. And again, since there's no fight to it, there's no headbutting, there's no, hey, we got to get this approved. It's just take a picture, and you're going to get money back. You know, that kind of thing. The... I don't feel like, you know, if I had to take that slip from the pharmacy home, scan it through or mail it or something like that, I think that's, you know, more than valid to say that's a kind of headache for, you know, thirty bucks. But with today's society where we can text that stuff straight through, and it takes me literally click, I'm already going to have... Because if I'm using it all the time, I'm already going to have Tina in as my contact for reimbursements, however I want to say it. And it's going to be click, send, gone. I mean, that's pretty quick. Because, again, there's no fight, there's no hassle. I don't have to beg and plead. I don't have to tell her what it is. I don't have to... There's nothing to call about or anything. You know what I mean?
Let's say you are in the hospital, and maybe your wife calls and says, I got all these bills. I need help. You call us.
Yeah.
I come, you see my pretty face, and we figure it out. Yeah. I mean, it is that. It's that simple. I'm joking. Like, it's that.
Doesn't have to deal with them. But yeah. Something that may help you as well. We've been doing this since 2008. We've got about sixty groups doing it. We literally still have our original group from 2008 that we first did it. And because of the way our platform works, they still, to this day, have a zero-dollar deductible because it's able to curb those premiums so much. You see a lot better renewals at long term because you've now raised that deductible to where the carriers aren't having to have so much paid out early, stuff like that. So, there's a lot of long-term benefits on the employer's side as well. So... But yeah, we've been doing it a long time and well-established. We've got probably about every group we talk to, the first time they hear it, they're like, what's the catch? And then ten years later, they're still doing it, you know? Because it makes sense.
Still looking for that catch.
I would suggest you set up a meeting with as many employees as you can to just kind of go over the basics of it. So, hopefully, they can easily do it themselves.
Oh, yeah.
And then not...
We're in-person people, so, yeah.
We have an in-person kind of man go through it step by step.
Yes.
That's fine.
My HSA, like, I work at the hospital.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, HSAs are a similar example. When they first came out, I mean, I've sold them for twenty-five... Not HSAs, they haven't been around for twenty-five years. But I've been selling for twenty-five years. And when HSAs came out, same thing. Honestly, same looks on our faces, like, you're going to have me do what? I got to set up a bank account, and I got to hold something out of my check, and then, you know, all this stuff. And then now, everybody who uses it says it's just the way that is, and I'm used to it. It's normal. And that's what this ends up becoming. It's just normal. So, it helps... The vast majority of our groups, and I mean, like, ninety percent, they're carrying the same deductibles year after year after year after year. Whereas typically, every year, it's like, what are we going to cut? You know? Here it comes. So...
So, is that something we need to vote on today?
Yes.
I would make a motion that we take the plan that is lower savings to the town, greater benefit to the employees.
So, that's your enhanced plan?
Enhanced. There we go.
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
Brian?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Lindsay?
Yes.
Chad? Thanks, guys.
That's it? Okay. So, we'll get back with you on paperwork. Okay. All right.
Get something set up.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. That's a good idea, Lindsay, except for being...
I had another suggestion that may be the best. Wives be invited to the meeting too because they'll probably...
Yeah, yes. Really? By the way, like, we'll make a nice meeting. We'll bring some... Really? It'll be... Yeah. Yes. What's the carry? Off the...
Okay.
It will go smoothly.
That's probably, yeah, a really good idea. There's the one thing to do it.
Hundreds through the wide video.
Okay. Now, we are all... Budget discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
I know you do, actually. You guys just look over.
All right. We're going to take a slight pause while they use the restroom.
I didn't see that John did after that.
This is a budget discussions.
Okay. He didn't get here, so I'll say...
Basically. Well, he needs to handle it.
Apparently, he thought he was going to hear this. My son-in-law. It didn't matter on any of it. But I said, well... If you decide to go, we now have it else in there. All they do is tie. I mean, the ties are... Phoenix is calling.
Is?
No. So, we don't have helmets on our hat. We have extra ties. If you would need one and you're interested.
I don't think you want me to be a lawyer.
It's all ammunition.
All right. We ready?
Yeah.
Alright, um, you spent a lot of time on this, Teresa, do you wanna kinda?
I'm just gonna pick a few highlights of things that we did a little different this year. With getting quite a bit of our lit money, our public safety lit money, bath because of the fire territory merger. Uh, we had been taking the police vehicles out of a couple extra different places, like Casino Riverboat and stuff. We decided, um, to go ahead and use their lit money since it is public safety lit, and pay their vehicle payments will all come out of their funds. Um, another thing we did, uh, we've been funding the parks with cast cotton money. So, we budgeted forty thousand dollars out of cast cotton instead of the full fifty, which leaves us a ten thousand dollar buffer a year, because as you guys know, uh, starting this year, it's an every-year fifty thousand dollars instead of an alternate year of a hundred thousand with the school. Um, so in doing that, I felt like we just needed to give the parks, find a way to give the parks a little bit more money than what they were running on. All they've been able to do is just do their, pay their bills, basically. So, um, we took twenty thousand out of Casino Riverboat this year. Um, if they want to, we'll send the money out of there first as far as mulch and things that they need, that we can spend out of there. That they wanna leave in the park department, if they wanna build money up over some time, they can, as long as we can continue to do this. Um, the two changes I did make today that differ from the ones that you got Friday afternoon, after I got done working on it, is that I went ahead and bumped up, uh, we originally had professional services at fifty thousand. We had dropped it back down to thirty thousand, and then I put it back in at fifty thousand, um, today. And the other one that I changed was the general office supplies, I think it was originally twenty-five hundred. We had dropped it to zero, and then I put it back at fifteen hundred. Let's see. Uh, Chad did come in Friday, we worked a lot going over the police and literally figuring out exactly how much each one of them makes, how much their taxes, their perp, and all of that was gonna be, so we've entered those in with maybe a little bit of buffer, but not a whole lot, um, for them. Um, I had trouble doing the debt service. I actually had to call Judy from DLGF today at ten till four because it kept saying I had errors for the GO bond. Um, I figured out that we get the money in June and December. The bills aren't due till July and January. But they didn't tell me they want me to pay it in June and December, even though they're not due till July and January. Well, I didn't make the first payment till after July first, because it wasn't due till the fifteenth. So she helped me get that figured out, got all that stuff taken care of. Um, MVH pretty much is staying kind of the same. Uh, I went ahead and put a paving match in. Jenny is working, actually, her and Lisa tomorrow are taking a class so that they can do Pazers studies. So they're taking an online class tomorrow, which if you, some of you who've been here for a while knows, those things are like, we paid twenty thousand dollars for them before. They're gonna take a free class tomorrow to learn how to do it. So, um, so I put, put a little in there. If things get rolling and we can come up with something, it's, it, the struggle is, our MVH follows our tax money, and as we know, as Brian explained earlier, unless it's just, it just doesn't raise up. So, I am gonna tell you, uh, we are gonna be in the MVH salaries and wages and probably the taxes. We are going to be, happen to look at an additional appropriation at the end of the year, mainly because of the snow we had, January, February, uh, the storms that we've had.
Tornado.
The tornadoes, and then, um, filling potholes. Those guys have filled so many potholes and tried to, they've even done some cuts and replaced some asphalt that normally would just been a fill-the-pothole thing, they've, they've been trying to do some more work, so. Um, I already went over the park. I didn't budget anything for cume cap improvement, nor did I cume cap development. There's not a lot of money in there. We thought we'd just build that up a little bit until we have something that we need to use it for. Um, I already went over cast cotton and public safety lit. And then, uh, Lisi, which is our continuing ed, it pretty much stayed the same other than we took the clothing allowance out and also moved into, um, public safety lit. We took the, you guys will, if you wanna look on the, let me find it again.
Page four or five.
Page what?
If you're looking at lit.
Four or five.
No, I, I don't, oh, yeah, I do. We moved clothing allowance, we moved their office supplies, their ammunition, their miscellaneous, their telephones, their machinery, equipment, and police vehicle payments. All what was left in the general fund, uh, that maybe, I think there was three or four of them that were still coming out of the general fund last year. We have moved all that into public safety lit so that the police department pays for it with their money.
Payroll comes out of general fund, everything else out of public safety lit, basically.
And that's because that's how you have to do it. You can't take their, you can't take their salary. Well, you cannot take them out, but then you're not gonna have anything to, is, put them one or the other, so.
We need you to Teresa this way.
If anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Yeah, we'll have our public hearing, will be on the eighteenth, when we have our regular September meeting on the eighteenth. The only thing is, is I need you guys to, uh, allow me to, when we get done here, if there's no changes, I have to go in and submit for our public hearing on the eighteenth. Thank you. So if you, if there's something you guys wanna discuss that you would want changed, that, that's on, up to you guys, and I'll just have to go in and change it before I, I have to submit that by midnight tonight, so.
Uh, remind, with the budget that we have here and our income that is projected to come in, what's our, what's our buffer? Or how, how well are we funded, and what's the wiggle room?
I mean, you asked that, I didn't.
Uh, I, yeah, what, you changed numbers, and I don't remember.
Yeah, we had a forty thousand, and I added twenty-one hundred, so we're probably.
About twenty-one thousand.
No, I added the thirty thousand and the fifteen hundred for the, so thirty-one. So we're probably right around twenty, but I can look real quick.
To the good?
To the good.
Yeah.
Where are we?
You were forty thousand over, weren't you?
Or is, as Janet would call it, it is a.
Fundable.
Fundable budget, yep.
Thirty, little thirty thousand buffer?
Uh, I think it's probably around a twenty thousand, yeah.
May I ask prior to the public hearing where the public can review the proposed budget?
You'll be able to view it starting tomorrow on Gateway. It, it, it doesn't publish in the paper, it's not how they do the budget, it's published in Gateway.
Gotcha, okay. Does that include fund balances as well, or is it just the proposed budget?
It'll be, I think, just the, I don't know, I'd never have to look at it, because I've always been the one entering.
Gotcha. I'm not sure exactly.
Forests of trees kind of thing? There, in the Form One, right? Form One for each section, it breaks down what the current balance is in the fund.
Okay.
Because when we did, even though we're doing a year budget, it's actually based off of eighteen months worth of data.
Okay.
So, so like, you'll see a section of it, and then the first thing you have is July to December of this year, the projected ending balance, and then the new income for the year, and all that. So, yeah, it, it tells you where we're at, where you're going, that way you know, if we have a problem, we should be able to see it now and adjust for next year.
What kind of, uh, what percentage did you use for the pay increase? If any, for the police department?
Standard three percent.
Just three percent?
Now, and Teresa, do you mind me sharing the, kind of the information that Janet shared about the? So, one of the things that is outstanding is there are still things from Senate Bill One that we don't know yet. Um, so, one of the recommendations that has been made, and many communities are doing, is they're going very conservative on their budget with the expectation that information may change around July. Uh, so, uh, while there are, you know, myself and several others, uh, that wish raises could be larger, um, at least we have something versus no raise, like many communities are doing, so. Um, it's, three percent is fundable with what we're doing, and we still have the cushion. So if we choose to do something different mid-year, uh, we still have that opportunity, but we're not, we're not hitting the full brakes. We're, we're in a little better shape than that, fortunately.
And I'm hoping that, you talked about Senate Bill One, I'm hoping that we find out something down at the income. There's a, some, there's one of the classes on SB One.
Yeah.
More than three percent raise for the chief, I can tell you that right now, because I just.
They're raised on forty-three hours, not thirty.
I just did his annual salary times three percent, and it's still, it's nineteen hundred and ten dollars and ninety-seven cents from what the twenty-twenty-five numbers are. So that if you take that, sixty-five thousand eight hundred and eleven that you have proposed, and take away that nineteen ten ninety-seven, it comes out to be sixty-three nine hundred and three cents. So however you figure the hours, it shouldn't, I mean, if the numbers are there, it's the whole year.
The amount is calculated off of the hourly rate times two thousand and eighty hours.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, his hours should have been the same as last year, and his number was sixty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine. So your hours are the same for the following, for this year coming up, and then you gave him nineteen hundred dollars, well, nineteen hundred and ten dollars and ninety-seven cents is the three percent at that rate, at sixty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. I don't even know why they're getting a raise, if it's not a year that we can do a raise for the policy that we have signed, or ordinance, or whatever it is technically called, that we do it every other year, and evaluate.
I thought it was three percent across the board for everybody.
We've signed a thing that it was every other year, we would reevaluate.
Every other year, we would reevaluate the salary ordinance, like we did last.
No, because it said something about, we don't take a raise unless we give a raise to the employees.
Correct, that's for us.
I understand that, but if we don't give a raise to anybody else, because we didn't give any to the MVH labor, why are we giving it to the police?
If that's not in the MVH labor, that doesn't have anything to do with his salary. The M, the labor in the MVH is for anybody who works in, on the street. He is not dedicated just to the street. That's not the fifth, that's not one person.
I'm still not a fan of giving the police a raise, period. And I, I mean, we give them a raise every year, and they spend a lot of money out of our general budget, but we sure don't do much to get protection from them.
I don't know where you're getting that information, because.
Well, let's see, Chad, we speed up and down Main Street every day, and yet nobody seems to drive by and pull anybody over. Whether they give them a ticket or not, they're not pulling anybody over for that. We've had complaints about people not stopping at stop signs, underage kids running golf carts, and they just let them run wild. It took six hours for a cop to come by my house on, on Saturday, and that was on a weekend, and I live on Main Street. Not to mention, I came home from working a concert one night at midnight, and another cop was just sitting at the gas station talking to three girls in a car. Just chit-chatting, there, it was out of the car talking to them. It was not like a stop, they were at the gas pump. I'm overspending all this money for the town, for these police that don't wanna do their job. You see them sitting down on thirteen for hours, I know they say an hour, but they're down there a lot more than that. I'm not okay with that in the budget.
I'll try to delegate here. It's gonna be rough for me, but, um, Saturday, it took six hours to get a response, or?
To just drive by my house, period.
So you sit and watch the street for six solid hours?
I watched one of them drive down Main Street and then turn the school street.
You didn't answer the question I asked. Did you sit and watch the street for six solid hours?
Yes, well, my wife did.
I don't treat this like I did the fire department. I really don't care what it costs. When I pick the phone up, if someone's raking in my house, I want a cop to show up, just like if I pick the phone up, because my house is on fire, or I'm having a heart attack, I expect the ambulance to show up. That's my opinion. It is a lot out of our general budget.
But we don't have a lot to begin with.
I mean, Anderson's what, giving their cops thirteen percent over the next, each year, over the next three years?
We can't afford to do that. We don't have the money.
We don't agree, there's a lot of underage kids driving on golf carts, but.
We're doing, I don't think in general with their cops enough to keep good ones here.
I think we're what, at least ten thousand lower than the surrounding communities?
Our starting rate is thirty-two thousand dollars less than Pendleton. And we have an officer in the academy right now. We are the lowest-paid Tier One Police Department in the county. So, um, Roger, I, I am sorry that you feel that way. Um, but, uh, it's, it's in our salary ordinance that, you know, one, we still have to do next year's salary ordinance, but we have to be able to budget for something. Whether or not a three percent raise, a ten percent raise, a fifty percent raise, whatever it is, it has to be budgeted for. We've been able to, within our budget, budget for that amount, and the ballot, or the budget is fundable, is balanced, and there, there's no reason for us to not be able to pass this, so, that's.
So chief's salary is a budget number. This is not what he's going to receive next year. That, that's what?
I mean, I, I've just picked that salary, I mean, I'm not saying that's, I don't understand what you're saying, Brian, I'm not. But all the officers got that bump, that's why I'm trying to figure this out, like, is that what he's gonna get, or they are going to?
Their budget numbers.
Yeah, we still have to do the salary ordinance. That's still a couple months out.
And I'm not so sure that, when Roger mentioned that we need to do evaluation, I think we do need a good evaluation on how our police department enforces some of the things, just like I said. Huh?
It needs to be done on all the employees, which is what we all talked about back in December, and nobody ever did anything.
But, uh, I, I think he's right in that, that we need to evaluate that, because there are a lot of things that are going on that we need to have a higher enforcement. But that has nothing to do with.
The budget.
The budget. I don't, three percent is not a lot, but as far as that goes, I'm not getting any percent. So, but I would, uh, are we ready to do, move on? So we need to make a motion to advertise for a public hearing for the eighteenth of September?
With this budget that I've.
On that, on that budget, or any changes you make.
Yes, on this budget.
On those numbers.
Okay. I want to make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Brian.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Roger.
No.
Lindsay.
Yes.
Chad.
Yes.
We weren't passing the budget, we were just.
And before we end the meeting, I, I would just like to point out, with the, uh, full-time fire department, starting January one, we're gonna be lucky if we have any police officers left. Because they're going to be way underpaid from what the fire department is.
Yes, they're starting out in the seventies. And a lot of our.
More than the chief is budgeted for.
And a lot of our guys, a lot of our police officers could.
We have two that are already members of the fire department.
So. Andy? What's your next one? So is that it? Is it, we done?
Yep, I'm done, all I gotta do is hit the submit button here and.
For the people that are out there that, and.
Yeah, three.
Three on, three listening tonight? Um, the other board member that we did not have a while ago for the advisory board is Stephen Prizer. And I hope to say that name right, P-R-I-S-E-R, is the other advisory board member.
For the township.
For the township. You wanna?
Lindsay, do you have Christie's?
Yeah.
Thank you, I was gonna.
I'm sorry, I, and we were right in the, when she left, so I didn't have a chance to yell. Yes.
Does anyone in the studio all know?
You guys know? Our regular scheduled meeting is Thursday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, at seven PM.
I make the motion, would you?
I second.
Oh, no. I'm trying to help.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael, appreciate that.